Let me get on the agenda today to tell you a little bit about what we're going to be doing. So our event is going to be from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM and as I mentioned, it will be in the Connor Industries hangar. Guests will arrive. They will not go into the airport terminal at all. We're going to have their planes outside the hangar with the door lifted. But between the doors and the airplane, we will have a red cordoned off area so that our guests are not able to meander away from the Connor Industries hangar at all. Like I said, we'll have the bar and the food inside the hangar. The dance floor will be right at the edge where you roll up the doors to the hangar. We have also hired Royal Thrones from Amarillo. They're going to have porta potties, but those will be located at the rear exit of the Connor Industries hangar through that door so that people do not have any opportunity to leave the premises at all. So they'll go back and forth to the restaurants from there. We have our special event insurance, which I brought a copy if y'all need that. It will be for a million dollars and it covers the alcohol liability as well. And then we have hired through the border police department, an officer who will be there from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM. So the officer will be on site before the guest arrives and will be on site when the last guest leaves. So we've done everything we can to ensure safety and still have good time. Any questions or comments?
The procedure should be you go to the airport manager. I know you didn't know this.
Well, I did go to the airport manager. He's been aware, but...
And then the commissioners.
Yeah, okay.
But I will say that we've had alcohol there before ever. We had parties for the pilots for the airshow is in a private hangar. We sold beer in a private hangar during the airshow. So we've had it out there before. And no problems.
So the bartenders are TABC certified?
Yes, sir, they are. We are using one of our chamber members, Chef Sharon Messina Allen, and she hires the TABC certified bartenders. And of course, they're obviously trained to not let people overconcern.
Yeah, the only concern I had was the event insurance that I emailed you that you said you'd bring, so...
Yes, would you like to have a copy?
Yeah, I think we need that on file just because when we used to rent the...
Absolutely.
When we used to rent the dome, we would require... We would require the event insurance, the security, and the TABC. So I mean, if we checked all three of those boxes like we did for the dome, then I'm all right with that.
Is this our copy?
That is your copy, yes. And also, I would like to add that we will be cutting off alcohol service 30 minutes before the event ends at 10:00. So that's one of the things Sharon told us we had to do, which we weren't aware of, so...
I know I'm late, but was there a contract or a form that we have? I know you found something.
Well, I have the old... Because I remember that we used to allow people to have alcohol events at the dome and that was a county-owned facility. So it's not like we're setting precedent because it used to be done at the dome all the time. As long as they followed these guidelines. I sent y'all a copy. Do y'all have any more questions for Fritzie?
So are we implementing this? Or it's already implemented, but the $500...
Well, no, because that was a county-owned facility, that they were renting that facility. They're already renting this. The Connors are allowing them to use that facility.
But the Connors renters are not owners.
Right. But the county owns the buildings.
Yeah, so they would need to make an agreement with us.
Right, for that.
Yeah, with... So my question is, if we already have this implemented, it's already...
Well, that was an old one for the dome. This was for the dome.
Oh, dome.
Yeah.
I was thinking, so we have zero...
We don't have anything in my...
So even though, and again, I'm not saying anything negative, but let's say something... Everything she tells us today goes, doesn't go as planned as she said. Do we have, like, what's our backup plan?
They have insurance.
They cover...
They have insurance, yes, yes, but what... Because you could easily say, well, y'all gave me permission. Sorry, we tore up someone else's... Our friends tore up another hangar. Y'all don't have any...
They're not going to have access to any other hangar.
That's why we have a law enforcement officer there so they cannot leave the premises of the hangar.
The city has let us use bicycle fencing, so it's going to be fencing around. So unless you jump on all the fence, you're in.
And I will say, our tickets are at a rate that probably the guests that will be attending, I would like to hope, would not be overindulging in trying to tear things up.
Was anybody making money on this?
We are making money on this.
The chamber is?
Yes, this is a fundraiser for the chamber so that we can continue to provide more networking and activities for our membership and the community at large.
Remember, when talking about this kind of dinner, one of the very first things I let know was I need a physical barrier.
Yeah, and all that's great. I just don't, I think we have to have something in writing.
And I think we can modify that. I can modify that and get the chamber to sign off on it.
With deposits and everything?
I don't think we need a deposit.
Okay.
What do y'all think?
If we're setting a precedent, if we set a precedent, I mean, if we do this, and I'm not against it by any means, because I mean, it's just part of business. But there is contracts. There are things listed. There are what is expected, what's not expected.
Right.
And if there is...
You can see on that one that requires them to have the law enforcement and, you know...
But if law enforcement doesn't show up, because if like something crazy happens, then we're at fault with TABC because we held an event without security there. And so, I mean, I agree with you about that because I've always been that way, even like with the city drone. Like even though we have these good old boy agreements that when everything goes right, it's great. But if something happens, we need to protect both parties to where we protect each other. Not in an adversarial way, but where we have that protection where we can say, all right, this didn't go as planned, but we have this in effect.
Because what I'm thinking is, we can modify this, like, what's urgent to say exactly?
Just relax.
Well, we're just allowing the alcohol to be served.
Not enter a contract or...
No, but we can modify that.
Because what I'm saying is, we could approve this and make, I could pencil in some modifications right now. And we approve this document. Because it looks pretty good, honestly.
I think we can just modify that to...
Yeah, because it looks, in my opinion, I think it's pretty inclusive, yeah.
You're happy to sign off.
Right, yeah, the agenda items just to allow alcohol.
I know, I know.
Friday.
Friday.
It's Friday.
Because what we're doing is...
Signed agreement for anything.
Yeah, any activity, we got to have something in writing.
100% for that.
And even a deposit.
Even though we approved the alcohol, we can still come up with something this week because that's not going to negate the agreement that they can use that. Because we could still have something that just signs that says...
Yeah, we're happy to sign contracts. We rent the dome all the time. Allen, we sign a contract every single time.
This is November 1st, though.
Right.
Can you just make the dome agreement and waive the deposit?
But so... Well, I wouldn't waive the deposit. It's a deposit, so you're going to get it back. Yeah, I mean, if you adhere to the contract.
Nonprofits, I think, got it for free, didn't they? Because nonprofits don't have any listing up there on that.
Is the chamber a nonprofit? And it has member fees?
Yeah, they're 501(c)(6).
Oh, you're c6, yeah.
Yeah. We also have a foundation that's 501(c)(3), but we're raising the money under the 501(c)(6).
Yeah, I couldn't give them a free pass on that. They'd still have to make a deposit.
I mean, the county's property is just a steel building. Nothing really that could be damaged besides our property. It's just a metal building with all of this.
Yeah, but that also, I'm glad you said that because that also adds something else to the thing. We need to include, if we're going to rent hangars, we need to include you guys in that to where if something happens with their event...
To your stuff.
Yeah, to your stuff, that there's protection on that end, too.
Well, that's why they have that incentive.
The special event insurance, it's all property, alcohol service, the whole, I mean, it's a whole...
But without a signed agreement between you and the property owners, that doesn't matter.
Well, I'd be happy to sign one.
That's what I was just saying, that I'm glad he said that because I didn't think about that aspect, too.
And again, I'm not worried about you guys. I just know in all the events I've been a part of, we can't control everybody.
Sure.
You can, and especially when alcohol's involved. I don't care if they're white collar, blue collar, no collar, whatever collar they're wearing that day. Alcohol changes everything. And again, I'm not against it. I mean, most people think pastors are, but I like a margarita, too. But I'm not against it. I'm just saying, I want to be sure we protect the liability of the airport and the property of everyone who uses some of our facilities. And it's good to have this because I hope this isn't the end. I hope this is something we continue to do and we just need to have our ducks in a row and have some protection set up in that, not just for the county, but also for people who also rent out there. So, but I also know we have to submit this to the court to get approved and we don't have time.
I would think that we could work on that for future events. If y'all are okay with them going forward since we're kind of in a time crunch and...
Yeah, because it's not Joel's fault. We just didn't really think about it. It's really on us. All right.
And we could work on that for the future, in the event that we decide to do more things out there.
I don't want to see this event canceled because of...
Yeah, I think we can work on this.
I think we just need to.
Yeah.
Make sure it doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
I think if you withdraw, someone could approve an agreement to sign today, but...
I can work on that.
But this is, this is fixed and it's a future thing.
Yeah.
Yes. I agree.
Okay, so if there's not any more questions for Fritzie or the chamber, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the Connors hangar for a dinner party.
With?
With.
Alcohol.
Alcohol.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Do I have that?
Thank you all very much. And I will be happy to stop at your convenience to email you the documents that are needed.
I'll email you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item two on the regular agenda is to consider and/or approve our indigent defense resolution. It's time to update this. We do this, I think, every two years. The district judges work on the indigent defense plan and we submit all this stuff and we get that little bitty bit of money that helps us pay for all the court appointed attorneys. So I just need a motion.
I move to approve the indigent defense resolution as presented.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, item three is to consider and/or approve the 2025 rural law enforcement grant agreement. This is our Senate Bill 22 money due by the 31st. So they just, I just got this. So they're reminding me daily to get it docu-signed. So I just need a motion to move forward with the agreement for the Senate Bill 22 money.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 rural law enforcement grant agreement.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, item four, consider and/or approve the change order request for the Stenette Annex roof.
That is, we approved the roof for the Annex some time ago, but we got it stripped off, got all the tram off, all that stuff, and all the pounds of rotted wood around the outside edge and that housing room in the back that had all the compressors in the grocery store. We do a little work back there on the deck and stuff. And basically, they charged us mostly the material. There wasn't much labor involved. It is all, the roof is pretty much finished now. So we're waiting on inspection right now. So, which this was kind of expected.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the change order for the Stenette Annex roof for $4,325.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, and item five is to consider and/or approve the change order request for the shades here at the courthouse.
That one was all we talked about before, that the original bid, $59,950. The judge got with our banner courthouse, they decided to go with the darker shade.
Doesn't allow as much light in.
And that was nothing to do with me. That was their deal. But to go with the thicker fabric was $1,985 and that was pretty reasonable. The change order also, if you don't have a problem with it, which is customary, when he sent the change order, he sent on here 50% down and 50% on completion, which that was talked about. However, on his original bid, he didn't have that on there. So to do the 50% down, 50%, I think we need to approve that. If it's customary, it's just that he left that off his original bid. So if that change order is okay to...
Anybody have a complaint about that?
Any questions for Ben? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the change order with commercial blinds from the original contract for $1,985 and also 50% down, 50% on completion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Item six is to consider and/or approve the Carson County inmate housing contract. I don't know that many things really changed on this.
The one we did last year also?
Yeah, I think we're just updating it.
Because there wasn't, I didn't see a price increase, but I couldn't find last year's.
I think the price went up last year.
But it didn't go up this year?
I don't think so.
Okay. I tried to find it Friday, but I couldn't find the last year's agreement in all my records. My chair's so low. I feel like I'm right at your elbow.
Don't ever do that again.
Do I hear a motion on this?
I move to approve the Carson County inmate housing contract for this year, 2024 and '25.
So, a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Item seven is to consider and/or approve the inter-local agreement with the city of Stenette for the city's permission for the county to improve the parking lot right of ways.
That is for the placey project that will actually, if this gets approved, be starting tomorrow. And they have a special city council meeting tonight at 7:00 to consider it also.
Thank you. City is the net.
As long as that was good approval, we'll be starting the project tomorrow. But this is to just cover around the perimeter of the parking lot between the county property line and edge of the street, which is city right of way. And that's, and then also the alley behind the Annex, improving it. And there's going to be one little area there that's paved for a turnaround, so don't chew the alley up for parking and stuff.
Smart.
That's all it's for.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the inter-local agreement, city of Stenette, Hudson County, for city's permission to county to improve parking lot right of way.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, item eight is to consider and/or approve any ARP grant projects. We have one for the change order on the roof because that roof was funded out of ARP.
The roof was funded out of ARP and then was this part of the roof.
We already approved the ADA. We just need to approve the 4,325.
Right. The other change order was approved with the blinds that didn't, that's how they do it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve change order for the roof, the PMR roofing, for the Annex roof, an amount of $4,325 to be paid out ARP.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'd like to speak on the financials for the ARP.
Yes.
So it's showing that we got about $264,000 left. That is including the stuff that's been awarded.
So that's everything that's allocated so far?
Yes, but not necessarily allocated in the federal government's eyes.
Right.
Because there may not be existing POs for this or contracts. And so for the next court, I would like to have a better list of those things that aren't completely obligated under federal guidelines.
Okay.
And maybe put those either back into the fund to be allocated elsewhere or see if they can get some sort of signed contract or PO issued for these things because for the federal government to...
Right, by the end of December, we got to have that.
We have to have it under contract or ordered.
Okay.
So I know we'll talk about it next meeting. Do we have a lot of that? I mean, just, I mean, if you don't know, that's fine. I'm just curious.
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay, that's fair. That's something we'll talk about. I was just curious.
I was going to get a list.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
There was a couple of projects that was removed a long time ago. Something happened.
Right, and that money got thrown back.
But that's a different deal.
Okay.
I don't hold anything else, but...
Okay, the next item on the agenda, item nine, is to consider and/or approve the burn ban or rescind the burn ban. Now, I would say no action at this time. We've got some pretty windy days in the next, this week. And I think we're already under a red flag warning today. Do you know what the KBDIS? Did you look it up?
No, I just know until 5:00, we're under a red flag. So I didn't...
Right. I know it's still bad and like Gary said, give us some rain, please.
We need it.
We need it. We do.
When y'all get these notifications, do they come at 3:00 in the morning for everybody?
Well, no, my phone's off.
Oh, okay. We're at 5:28. It drives to 6:21.
Okay, yes, so no action on the burn ban. Thank you for looking that up. Item nine, consider, oh, no, I'm sorry. Item 10, consider and/or approve request for the use of the club rooms at the border library or fridge.
I don't have anything new.
Neither do I.
Okay. Item 11, consider and/or approve any line item changes, transfers, and/or budget amendments.
I needed to submit a corrected one from last mission court. I included both fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '24 on the same budget amendment.
Get it here, please.
So there's one, a new one for fiscal year '24 and then a new one for fiscal year '25 and then the one for fiscal year '25, some of those approved projects from last year, from last mission court.
Okay. I have all three. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the line item changes, transfers, or budget amendments.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I would like to say I spoke with a commissioner at the conference this weekend and I showed him our stuff, our packet, and they love the line item transfer stuff. And so I made, I got him in contact or gave him your contact information, Lisa.
Okay, item 13 is to consider and/or approve any donations to Hudson County. We'll have some at next meeting. I did, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I did. Item 12, consider and/or approve advertising, opening, accepting, or awarding bids.
We just have two that are open. One for the hall and disposal of the concrete and one for the road and bid. It'll be opened on the 4th.
Okay.
As far as calls, going out for bids possibly? You want to discuss that now or...
Sure, yeah, this is it.
Okay. The, uh... This has been talked about a few times or quite a bit, is maybe consider going out for bids for covered parking, for employee parking here at the courthouse. I think if we considered that... I think if we, if we considered that, then NX needs to have it too, and it needs to be fair for everybody. So it's going to be fairly expensive, but I'll get your thoughts on whether you would want to consider doing the covered parking for us. If we wanted, if we've considered going out for bids for that, but I think I wouldn't want to do it to the courthouse if I do it for everybody.
So when you say everybody, you're just Stinet area?
We could have a plan. We could have a plan.
There's also, I mean, there's more than, I don't know if we have enough money through ARP. This is an ARP program. I still don't know what everybody else's projects are yet. But if you had a plan together to maybe budget for some of it next year or something, if we did some of it here, that's fine. But there's got to be a plan to create, you know, treat everybody the same.
And do you have a ballpark pause?
As long as we do sealed bids, I'm not going to numbers out.
I mean, I don't think it hurts to go out for bids and see what we're talking.
I think we could, we could look into it. I just I don't know how it's going to work out.
We wouldn't have to get sealed bids just to get some prices, wouldn't we?
Uh, technically, you do.
Oh, really?
Guys, we got to post and ask for sealed bids, but that's, that's just the way it works.
Let's say covered parking, I know you and I talked about like get that car dealership kind of campus.
It would be similar to that. I mean, I've looked, I've looked at a bunch of them, and it would be a lot like that and make it adapting to the parking like we're putting across the street, you know, we have ankle parking and, you know, employee parking over there. And you'd have to put up, probably put up like in the center, maybe three separate ones to fit what we're trying to do. And then there'd be some along the edge of the building and, and what have you. The only issue I've got with putting those around the building is if, if it ever decided maybe later down the road to use that building for something else, these are in the way.
Oh, yeah.
So you could lose those. Now, I don't, I don't know what that's going to be. But if you decide to need parking just for that building, this may not be the smartest thing. But also, there's some spaces behind the jail that's used for parking. You can't put those there. It's too close city right away.
Yeah.
The army would be over the city right away. We can't do that. So around the building and the rest of it, we could.
This is probably going to, like you said, very expensive, exceed fifty thousand easily. You think it'll exceed the fifty thousand easily?
Oh, yeah, a lot of ways. Oh, for sure.
I think it's cool if we can use ARP, but not cool if we use tax dollars.
I'm not, no.
Yeah.
I put the effort into looking into it. I look into it. I don't know how it turned out. The other thing I would like to go out for bids for is to put heat and air annex across the street. And we'll set it up with two units and split the building. And then if that building ever needs petition or whatever, we could do, we could use our, we could adapt to that. And put in two separate units. And then if you need to section it off or whatever happens in the future, it'd be there. And it, but it would, it would cover the building.
So it doesn't currently have any?
No, the units were, they was worthless. They, they've already been jumped. They were, they were, who knows how old. But we do need to get, we do need to get heat there and there before, too late in the season. Have something dependable. And the closets are there to put them in. It's just, we have new ducting and all, to get it all updated. But we have a false ceiling in there, so we'll. You don't need to change it. It's not a big deal to change the routing of it.
You can reduct pretty easy if you have to. Put a regulator in.
So thoughts? Y'all want to go out for bid for the parking, covered parking?
I'd like to make a request on just the process of this thing. Since I'm the one that usually types up the advertisement for the paper, I would really like to be able to present that whenever y'all approve going.
Right, so we can approve the words.
Any changes that y'all would like to make before it actually hits the papers? So that, I mean, you know exactly what's being advertised. Not that, I mean, yeah, you can agree, yeah, let's go out for bids, and then we put something in the bid, and you're like, well, I didn't know that's what it was going to be later, you know?
So you're saying?
So once we have the specs or the details or whatever on a bid packet and the advertisement that goes into the paper, I can present that all to you. And then you decide to go out for bid.
So you want the scope of work before you, we ever decide, we want to.
So like if you know you're bringing a project. Bring it to me first, and we'll come up with a packet that you can present to everyone. So that we've got the scope of work and everybody knows what's going to be bid on, everybody knows what's going to be advertised.
What we're doing today is getting ideas whether you want to consider it, so.
And maybe that's something you come and you decide, yeah, we want to move forward, and then I bring it back to you the next court.
And we could do that.
Yeah, I would rather talk about it as if we want to consider it, then we could bring it back and do what you're wanting to do. But step one is to talk about it, see why go spend all this time doing a scope of work for this?
Yeah, nobody wants to.
Nobody wants to do it.
And I agree with that, too.
I'm all for that, but let's talk about it first.
I think, in my personal opinion, I think it'd be cool if we can use ARP funds to put covered parking. Because I know for a fact, several times, like the hailstorm that just came through destroyed a lot of our employees. Not destroyed them, but damaged a lot of their vehicles last summer, especially here in Stinet. And then.
I'm a hundred percent favor in helping employees do this.
Yeah, I think it's cool.
Is it going to work financially or whatever? I don't, I don't know, but we'll just have to find out.
Well, I'm cool with going out.
But there, there's also a priority list. We have so much ARP funds left. What's, what's top of the priority list?
Yeah, I don't.
Because I don't know what everybody else is doing. So if there's something more important, let's go there.
I just have a twenty thousand dollar digital sign I'd like to present, traffic radar trailer, traffic message board thing, and it's looking about twenty thousand, but.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't know what everybody else is doing, but we're only two months away to have that stuff. So there should be a priority list where we want to concentrate. And I don't know if that list exists.
Well, I don't, I'm not aware of.
We don't have, I think, any other projects turned down. I'm waiting on my third quote to get the library outside cracks and stuff sealed, and then I'm done.
I, I got a lot of things I could do if you hold on.
Then.
I'm not out of ideas here, but.
But minus those two, I don't think.
But I don't want to work on ideas that somebody else needs for us.
Yeah. I know that radar trailer is a want, not a need.
I would like to, there's two other things I would like to do for now, and that is remove all the vanadium and tile and stuff out of NX, clean the concrete, not put out flooring, but just get it all cleaned and get all that stuff up. And I don't know about the flooring yet, but we'd have it, we could even stain the concrete if that come to that, but we'd have it nice and clean.
Until you know what you're going to use it for.
Yeah, I don't want to go put flooring, it might not suit. Two of us will be there. And then paint the exterior. We can do that.
This might be a silly question, but can you put covers out there in the parking lot? Will that affect the historical value of the courthouse?
I don't think so. Parking lot, the historical.
Well, he's talking over there, across there, because we want to move the employee parking over there.
There, there's not going to be anything on this side of the street.
Oh, there isn't?
No, it's, everything's going to be on that side of the street.
I misunderstood. I thought she meant on this side, too.
No, this, this will be public parking on this side. There again, unless somebody's changed their mind, they don't want to do this. So, but the public parking will be on the, on the west side. Employee parking will be on the.
Across the street.
And they're over there all the way, and public can pull up to the door or whatever. Unless there's a change of opinion on that. But that's where we're headed right now.
I don't think it hurts to get quotes on it.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to have it, we need to have any and all projects kind of lined up that we can kind of pick and choose over the next two months.
I would really like to see a priority list to see.
I don't think there's that many projects, but I mean, besides.
I guess if there's no priority list, if there's no.
Yeah, I know.
I have lots of projects.
Museum cameras are going in. We, then we've rolled over to twenty-five. They're installing them this week, and then museum's done. And then the library exterior, I'm done on that. And I haven't heard, like, besides that sign. We've kind of talked the last couple of months, but nobody's turned anything else.
No one's turned anything in.
Are you playing anything for NX?
ARP request from a United Way that we.
The only thing is that generator.
Well, the generator would be to grant. You talking about the generator Langos working on?
Yeah.
That's hazard mitigation grant.
If we also have to match that too, though, don't we?
Twenty-five, seventy-five, twenty-five.
I think it's. I don't think it's fifty-fifty, but it's.
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Yeah, okay.
So is there just some, like, general maintenance stuff that needs to be done over at the annex that we could use the ARP fund? Like you said, like the flooring or painting the outside to get it, the shell ready for whatever we decide?
Say this again, that was.
Maintenance stuff that needs to be done over there.
At the Stinet Annex.
Even at the flooring and removing the old flooring, all that, it could still be, we've also, part of this ARP is the LATCF that we got for having the federal land on here. And so there's still about forty-something thousand. It's included in that two six.
In that tube.
That we could use for smaller, you know.
Projects.
Projects.
I mean, I think we just, if we're going to do that, we just need to get moving with it.
Well, we're.
As well. Some proposals.
The stuff we're doing over there right now is like getting all the old units out. It took some of those to. For salvage.
The salvage.
And we got paid for salvage and we're totally done with that. I'd like to consider, well, we'll talk about that later, but maybe bringing that money back to the line item for the building. But.
I'd say do it, because there's.
I said, my suggestion would be to use the ARP.
Well, we've got to get it used. Yep.
And that's just general, I mean, that's just miscellaneous income that goes into the general fund.
Court will have to decide, but.
I'd say there's not.
I don't know that it can be put back into that line item, because it's miscellaneous income, and we've already budgeted for miscellaneous income. And you can't.
What's the difference, what's the difference in this? And say you had automobiles that you, that was put back in there.
You don't budget for, you don't budget for insurance proceeds. We don't budget for any insurance, insurance proceeds. We do budget for miscellaneous income.
Well, like, you know, there was, we give an exception to put a trade, to put a.
A trade-in.
Cell back in there. I don't remember.
That was the first sale of assets that's not budgeted for. That's income that we're receiving that hasn't been budgeted for.
This is, this is one of those.
Miscellaneous revenue has already been budgeted fifty thousand dollars. It doesn't matter where it comes.
Right.
Okay, anyway.
On yours, I mean, there's not any hard no's right now on that, so I'd.
Do what?
We run out of time on your, on this project. I'd go ahead and get it for the next meeting so we can approve.
Well, yeah.
I mean.
Nobody's saying no right now.
Well, you got two months left.
All the projects you can think of, and then we'll pick and choose.
Right.
That's the way I look at it. We don't have a list.
The only thing is they're. I don't think it's sealed bid until they come and inspect the premises, and then they're going to have to, they're going to show up. And the one that's probably more likely is in Dallas. There's nobody local like that.
So you're going to automatically get them to quote all the properties or just starting with this here? Because the museum.
I think if we could get a, well, if we quote the courthouse, I think we'll get an idea how far we want to go. Then we'd have to get another quote for the annex or whatever, but.
But you couldn't, like, cover parking at museums? They park out front, and that's city.
Right.
You couldn't do it there.
Where at?
That museum.
Park there when I need to. We'd have one that you'd have to move your car and I could park there.
There's room for both.
Library, annex.
I probably wouldn't.
And then your option.
Our space is so little.
But that'd be it.
Of course, they're probably going to hate me both, Robin and Delina, just that.
I don't know how many, I don't know how many.
Obama.
Me, me at the annex. Of course, there's plenty of room back there, but that's.
That's, that'd be easy place.
Oh, yeah, that'd be.
But I'm not sure how many spaces that need.
And it'd help us to go do soccer on Saturday.
That can be a huge issue.
Like at the annex, that would be fantastic.
I didn't mean to start that.
The patrol, for sheriff's department and stuff, you know, get them out of the hail and whatever.
Last thing, too, the public can't compete for those at any, at any time. So we won't ever avoid that issue.
Yeah, but the public don't park in the back.
No, they don't park in the back, in the back at all.
But they can't, they'd have to walk all the way around because they don't have any access into the building.
Talking about during storms and stuff.
Oh, well, yeah.
They also don't park under bank.
Right, true.
Until about four hours before.
Till they hear hail.
And hopefully, all of our cars will be parked there till six, and then they can have at it after that.
The, the canopies, it'll be, it'd be rush, rush, get all this in here before we run out of time. Because there's, there's a lot to do there.
I'm impressed with those canopies. I'm, I'm just talking now, but when they first put them up at car dealerships, when I first saw them, I'm like, ah, those aren't going to last. That's.
No, there's.
They have lasted forever.
Several years.
If y'all want to look at them, I think, uh, Ponor Nation in Amarillo has this one from, this company in Dallas. And then there's other company, other over border too, but, and I'm not so sure those might come there. I know the one at Amarillo, I was going to come on, look at it.
Yeah.
But see, this also affects, we need to do lighting over there, no matter whether there's parking or not, so that the parking lot is lit up.
Yeah.
And if you put up the canopies, the lighting's going to the canopies. If you don't, it's going on a pole, so. Can't do that until we.
Cameras reach to the. To the annex. Um, I'm sure we could move.
Yeah, they, they should just be Wi-Fi cameras.
That does.
And we'll shoot a signal to them and be able to be.
But like the one that suits that's usually looking at the evergreen tree.
The end goal over here is to mount on the corner of the jail to have a camera facing over that way. It's the closest point.
Yep.
And then right now, we don't have cameras at the annex, but if you're ever, if there are ever are cameras at the annex, then we'd, we'd use those too. But you would have a pretty good view off the corner of the jail. Maybe adjust off the courthouse what's already here to get a better view.
Okay, so we've, we've had a lot of discussion. What, what, do I need a motion for, to what we're going to go out to bid, for bid for?
No.
We'll just.
He's going to make the.
And then we'll do that. We'll talk about that next meeting. We'll get some stuff together.
We'll go to.
Okay.
Get a scope of work and then do that.
On the parking and the, the floor removal and the painting and the.
Parking, heat and air.
Heat and air.
And.
General maintenance over there. Floor.
Yeah, but.
Painting, all that.
Suit, not general maintenance now, because we don't have, everything we did so far is done in-house. We're not, I already did that, yeah, so.
Okay.
But I also got for painting, possibly.
And the floor removal.
And floor removal.
Yeah, okay. All right, good. Thank you, Ben.
I like it.
I just created a lot of work myself.
I know. That's what I was about to say. I like it. Ben's working, and I don't, I don't have to do it.
Sometimes you learn to shut up.
Okay, item thirteen is the consider and or approve donations to Hudson County. I think we'll have one next meeting. Item fourteen, discussion of county judges and commissioners, precinct daily operations. Um, item fourteen, discussion of county judges and commissioners, precinct daily operations. Um, before we get started with that, just want to say for anyone that's listening or any of the employees, we're gonna start work on the paving on Tuesday.
The schedule right now is their local agreement gets passed, city council
Right.
It's gonna be tonight. Then we start paving tomorrow. And we're starting at the annex. In that parking lot, this judge has her
We have Croctover party.
Croctover thing tomorrow, so we're leaving this alone, but Wednesday morning, she'll send out a text
All of the employees need
Employees parked over at
Park at the church.
Church. At that parking lot and leave this alone. We're gonna have it, we're getting cones set up and everything there tomorrow night to vacate this parking lot. And then we'll get it seal coded and then finish the uh the annex part.
Okay.
Does the email go out there?
Yes, yes, or a text message or something.
Include where extension
Over on that side of the jail, yes.
So they need to park.
Yeah. Okay, I don't know if we're doing that
What?
That, uh, on the jail, on that side of the jail, yeah.
Yeah, so
So they need to park at the church also.
We'll cover it. We're doing that behind the jail too. We're, we're, we'll seal code it. But yeah, it needs to be vacated too.
Okay.
Everything on employee parking on the east side of the courthouse needs to park over at
At the church.
And, and not across the street, cuz we're working over there too. We need to go over to the church parking lot.
Okay. I'll make sure a message goes out. Hey, anything else on precinct daily operations? You guys got anything?
So I meant to talk about this last time. Um, one of the issues that we've talked, and I've talked to Ben about this a little bit. Do, you know, when your, your lady is possibly retiring at the annex that does the maintenance, right?
No, I don't have any idea. She hadn't talked about it yet.
But she's talked to a few of the employees there that
Who is the lady that does?
Yeah.
So once she, once she retires, we have an issue because it's just hard to keep people for, we found out the last year or two, that it's hard to keep people just for ten to twelve hours at each facility. And I talked to Ben about that part-time maintenance of the courthouse line item and all of our um salaries of the janitor stuff about potentially we, they used to, before we were commissioners, they used to have one janitor that would go from the annex to the library to the museum and just be stationed at the annex. And that was kind of a full-time position within the county. And I think um, talking with several people, that might be the best solution long-term for that too, cuz I've had people that are not interested in doing the part-time, but when we talk about the, the potential full-time, they're like, oh, yeah, absolutely. I'd, I'd be interested in that. And so
Well, we can, we can combine those, I think.
So I just wanted to mention, yeah, and that's what, we had talked about possibly creating a line item and transferring all of those to that line item. It would create a pretty good salary for that. And so I meant to bring that up last time, just
I think it'd be a great idea to
We won't be able to create a new line item because the budget's already been passed, but we could
Just
We could for next year.
To the annex custodial line and just pay it from there. They just know their duties is to rover around to the other places.
I think that'd be great, y'all. You know, with all y'all stuff together, then you could
Oh, yeah.
You got a full-time position.
Yeah.
No, I have a, a employee right now in Fritsch and what
We weren't invited yet.
You, I'm not invited to this party?
But anyway, go ahead.
But I, what we learned, you and I learned, is that people are okay working in border. They don't wanna drop to Fritsch.
Right.
So does that leave mine just a part-time thing?
Yeah.
For now, okay.
Unless
I'm okay with that.
Because you're happy with the one you got. Yeah, if it ever
Part-time money we put in here for maintenance, you know? For what our part-time pay is, it's almost impossible.
Oh, yeah, I think it'd be a great
Yeah, I mean, the
Anybody of good quality.
Well
We run out too, cuz at the library, they kinda, we had a good reliable person that would clean after hours and some of the resumes I got, I wouldn't I mean, I don't want them there when nobody else is there. And so when we made them clean during the day, and sometimes with the kids in there or, you know, them trying to work around the study and stuff, that guy kind of a passer.
Like, like, well, Everville's same. I mean, you, you go in, you want everybody to feel comfortable with whoever's in there doing whatever, why?
Right.
I don't want somebody here that's, you know, ladies in these offices or something don't feel comfortable. I don't wanna see that.
Yeah, we want somebody that we hire because we want to, not because we have to.
Yeah, so.
And so so we can work on a solution for that, that kind of together. I just wanted to
Yeah.
You know, if we had more spare time over here, the people that's working here could help with the health stuff, but there's
Doesn't seem to be any spare time.
Right. So doesn't help much. And uh
We don't seem to have any problem with them working during working hours over there at the annex.
Right.
So
This is something I'd like to bring up too, is like, I know we talked about the judge taking a purple wave and all, which that's true, but I understand you pointed Eddie to take help with purple wave. He's kinda overloaded already. And so I don't know how he's gonna do all this. I don't, I don't know how he's gonna work.
I didn't appoint Eddie to do that. I just asked him if I was gone, could, and someone came to wanna start it and look at it, could he meet him over there? That's all I asked him to do.
He's, he's preloaded up. We've got a lot.
Yes, he is busy.
Huh?
Yes, he is busy.
He's, well, cuz we're putting all these project stuff on him too, to help with those and that's along with his normal stuff.
Anything else on daily operations?
I just got um, probably it'll start in January, a nuisance uh abatement regarding vegetation and different stuff. I'd like to bring, we don't get very many. I don't want you to think this is overload the court, but I'd like to bring every property that we're about to send the certified letter to, to the court and just make it public record that we are sending out these, if that's okay with the
Sure.
Okay, but I wrote a letter. I wrote the letter. Thank you.
Oh, perfect.
Okay.
I got one more thing. Um, so I mentioned last meeting that when they got in the, the decking and the front decking of the museum, it'd be about four thousand dollars. It was a lot worse than they thought and so it's closer to seven. So we put that in the budget as the line item for the building maintenance and didn't do it out of A R P, so does the, do we want to take that out of, do I, y'all want me to take that out of contingency or put an A R P request in for that change or for like the seven thousand difference? I mean, it's twelve and one and dozen
The A R P request, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to get, ask you guys about it.
That's fixing to be done, isn't it?
They're almost done.
Yeah, they were working on it last time I was there.
It looks great, but yeah, they ripped that top off and they were, they're pretty much all the beams were rotted out and that was substantial. Like, like I said, it was, it was kinda, they thought it was done about ten years ago correctly, but the water, they drilled holes from the post into the top and so the water was just dripping in through there, through the posts. So this time, they're not gonna drill through the decking. They're gonna put um reinforced, they're gonna put a bolt in the middle and reinforce the plastic posts instead of how they did it last time. And it looks really good. But yeah, they'll be done. The museum, the camera should be done at the museum this, this wanted to ask that. I'll do A R P.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else? Okay, um, item fifteen, consider and or approve the sale of struck-off tax properties, tax deeds. We have a couple. The first one is um, a counter offer and it is property located at Zero Harbor Drive, Fritsch, submitting an offer, a counter offer of two hundred and fifty dollars has been made by Terry and Lisa Kelly Homan from Fritsch. Taxes haven't been paid since two thousand. They submitted an original offer we countered with two fifty and they're um submitting the offer that we countered with.
I moved, oh.
Do I hear a motion?
I moved to approve the, uh, award the uh, bid as presented for two hundred and fifty dollars for that property.
Okay, do I hear a second? A motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and then the next property is uh, two seventeen North Wilhelm in Stinet, submitting an offer of three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars has been made by Dalbert and Tiffany Phelan. Uh, taxes have not been paid since nineteen eighty-nine. It was struck off in twenty twenty-two and appraised at a hundred and twenty-eight, three.
Why do I know that name?
Why do we know that name?
This one came up, came up some time ago and uh, there's a big difference in the hundred and twenty-eight, three visually looking at it. It looks like it needs to be tore down. I don't know, it's like a violation.
Yeah, there's
And it's not even in the ballpark.
Yeah, it looks, it's pretty, pretty bad.
So, I mean, that's, and then the, the last time this come up, county countered at five and the city wanted ten, school just rejected it. So, I mean, I, I don't know, there's a big difference there, so.
What was the bid last time? Do you remember?
Uh, I don't remember what the bid was. I know they didn't take the counter. Well, the city wanted more and the school rejected the bid, so we're just but the valuation on this is set at one twenty-eight, three.
Right.
Which is crazy.
Right, but that's probably, that's
Yeah, those pictures, that's gonna be
Kind of false.
You can visually look at property and it is horrible. It looks like it needs to be knocked out.
Uh, no, no, she can't. She really can't.
Oh, she can't? Oh, all right, let's talk.
I mean, you're the boss though, Josh.
We can make a decision. Do, do I hear a motion?
I'm still filing with the five thousand, but um
Is that your motion?
I'm, I'm motioning to counter with the five thousand. Let's see what goes.
Okay.
Somebody's gonna figure this out someday.
Do I hear a second?
No, I'll say
Okay, we have a motion and a second to counter in the amount of five thousand dollars. Any further discussion?
So if there is something you wanna add, you can come the next time as a public, like, public comment, just to let you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's that. They sent the, they sent a letter. I think y'all got information.
Y'all got it, but there's the, you know, the cost for demo and
Yeah.
Which is probably
Yeah.
What needs to happen.
Oh, yeah.
Right, definitely. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Neighborhood, yes.
Right. Was there any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, we'll have a counter for five thousand. Um, those were the only two I had this time. So I guess we're down to motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
That's too much.
Motion and a second, all in favor. Meeting adjourned. Good job, y'all.
I apologize for saying that.
Oh, no, you're fine.